I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask everybody to please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance. Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Here.
Councilmember Tal?
Here.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
Here.
And Mayor Shepherd Romney? Present. Thank you very much. The special meeting agenda is posted 24 hours apart each special meeting at the locations of City Hall, Crowell Public Library, and the Recreation Department. The special meeting agenda is also posted on the city's website. The general announcement that I'll make is that to ensure everybody, including those joining us remotely, are able to hear, all speakers, please speak clearly and directly into the microphone. Public comments are being accepted via email due to the COVID-19 advisory for social distancing. If you'd like to email a public comment for any agenda item to be read into the record, you can do so by emailing cityclerk@cityofsanmarino.org. We are also accepting comments from those joining us via Zoom. We have staff facilitating the meeting, thank you very much, and for Internet users and callers and to ensure everyone can hear us and see us and participate. Please note that all comments are limited to three minutes, and we will be timed by city staff. Thank you for your patience online and here tonight as we navigate through this process. I would now like to ask Acting City Clerk Merlo to explain how public comment can be made for each agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor. For each item on the agenda, there will be time for public comment. All comments will be limited to three minutes and will be timed by staff, and we will accept comments in three ways. First, we'll take in-person comments first for each item, and there are speaker cards available in the lobby near the agendas. Second, we will also accept comments via email sent to cityclerk@cityofsanmarino.org, and that email address is also found on the agenda. These will then be read into the record, and we must receive these emails before the public comment period for that particular item ends. The comments may be summarized if necessary to limit to under three minutes. Third, we'll ask for comments from our Zoom participants. When we ask for comments in this way, there are two ways you can let us know you would like to speak. First, you can use the raise hand feature, which is a button that's found by clicking on Participants at the bottom, and then clicking on Raise Hand on the bottom right side of the screen. Please do not use this feature until we have asked for public comment, or else we may not see it or know which item you are asking to speak on. As a second option, you can send a typed message via the chat box saying you would like to speak. And comments, again, will only be accepted until the public comment period for that item during the public comment period. Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Merlo. Does anyone here wish to speak at this time? Seeing none, do we have any public comment via email?
We do not have any general public comment. No.
Thank you. Do we have anyone participating virtually that would like to speak at this time?
We do not.
Thank you so much. As a point of privilege and in the wake of recent events over the past two weeks, and in consideration of the many emails that I've been receiving, I would like to make my own brief statement. Seeing the video George Floyd's murder galvanized Americans to condemn violence and demand equal justice. I believe it would be another injustice for us to turn away from the truth that we all witnessed and do nothing. We will never be at this moment again when Americans of all races, ages, religions, and genders recognize that liberty and justice for all is much more than a phrase in our pledge. By saying those words, every American assumes the responsibility to treat others equally. In the past, it's been too easy to remain silent and ignore injustices against one person and how it affects us all and how it affects our community. At this moment, there's an added burden for those in position of authority to listen, recognize what is existing and happening in all places, even here, and then do the tough work of finding the right path to go forward. Last Saturday, that meant protecting the First Amendment rights of people to assemble, speak out, and be heard as part of a march through the center of town, and while maintaining public safety. Our San Marino Police Department did a great job in doing so. Now it's up to us to continue to do their great work and review the city's policies and practices so that we can better reflect the community that we live in. I believe there are improvements that can be made that will lead us out of the past so that we can move forward into a future that's more just for all in San Marino. Racism didn't just start now, but it's a time to acknowledge it and ask what we can do to change so that we emerge from these difficult times stronger together than we have ever been. Thank you. City Manager, did you have a report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to report on two things tonight. First, I've gotten several queries from the public about the way that our agendas are looking right now and the fact that they say special meeting on them when it is our regularly scheduled meeting. So I just want to let the public know that as a result of the location change from either a regular meeting being held in the council chambers or our Friday meeting being held in the bathroom at Crowell Public Library, that these are therefore designated as special meetings simply because of the location change. So it's not changing our commitment to posting agendas within the same timeframe that we had in the past for these kinds of meetings, and it doesn't change the caliber of the meetings that we're having. That's just a little language change as a result of the forced location change. So just wanted to make that clear in case people still have that question more curious. The second thing that I wanted to announce is that many of you may have heard that the county is looking to expand its openings and reopen still further. We are expecting an official order to come out tomorrow to be effective on June 12th. And so city staff is looking at what that means, what it looks like, and we'll get communication out to the community as soon as we have a sense of what that might mean for San Marino. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion and a second to wait for the readings?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you. Next, we'll proceed to the consent calendar. Do any council members wish to pull any items from the consent? I had one that I'd like to pull, which is number eight. So do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar except for item eight? So move. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Oh, wait, do we have to have a... Since there are some agreements here that consist, should we have a roll call?
Sure.
Just to be clear, Vice Mayor, did you second that, or was that Councilmember Tal?
Aye, only by a second.
Oh, thank you. Apologies for that. All right, now I'll move to roll call. Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
And Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
Yes.
And Mayor Shepherd Romney?
Yes.
All right, those all passed unanimously, and carry on with number eight, please. So I asked to have it pulled because at the time when this was brought up before, I did not have an opportunity or I didn't understand the procedure that we were going through because I thought we were going to get a red line copied per Councilmember Tal's request, and then at that time, I was planning to ask, well, questions concerning the increase... I'm sorry. ...in the bidding limits and understand why, or I believe that they should be kept the same for the time being. And I don't know, that's why I'm pulling it. I don't know if there is a staff report that anyone would give on this subject, or...
I can respond in merit if you'd like. Basically, the reason that we increased the bidding amounts was so as to match the amounts that are set forth in state law. And basically, it doesn't change the council's approval authority. You still approve everything that's over $30,000, but it enables staff to, for example, use the informal bid process for certain amounts as opposed to the formal bidding process that expedites things. But so if you keep the limits as they currently are, which is certainly your prerogative to do so, it doesn't match the amounts that are allowed by state law, which basically allowed for, for lack of a better way of putting it, a consumer price increase to essentially... Because, of course, goods and services have increased over time, and that's why the state periodically makes adjustments to the amounts that are allowed by the state purchasing organs.
Okay, and if we... There's also the provision in here that it will keep going up whenever the state makes a change. Correct? So that in perpetuity, it will go up. And in doing so, we're eliminating the need to get multiple bids on items... Excuse me, projects of anything less than $60,000 and in between, well, really, anything of $200,000. Is that correct?
Basically, yes, you've articulated the thresholds. One threshold, you don't have to get formal bids, and one you can get informal bids, and then the top threshold, you have to get, go through the entire formal bidding procedure that's specified in state law. It's basically, again, it's essentially a CPI adjustment as time goes by. Obviously, the value of money increases, and therefore, that's why the state has made the decision to do so.
Right, but they are... The concern was that they're doubling almost these bid limits. I don't know what the correct language is, I'm sorry. And that in doing so, for our budget as a city is not doubling. So for us, the amounts are still relative to the percentage of money that we have, if you understand what I'm saying.
I think so. I mean, obviously, your budget and what you budget for any particular project is going to control, and even though the amounts, the process would change given the amount that's involved, obviously, you still are, again, awarding any contracts that are over $30,000. So it's up to the council to make the final determination and decide how you wish to spend your monies based on the budget, your budget.
I understand. This is a change in the process of the procedures, but any money spent still needs to be approved by council, either in the budget or a special request. We're just talking about some flexibility for staff to move faster through a process.
That's correct. Does anybody else have any questions about this or concerns?
You know, I do, thank you, because I was concerned, and I just want to confirm that, that there's language in here, procedures for public projects, and it does say for contracts for public projects of $60,000 or less may be approved and entered into for a department by the person who's designated by the city manager or the department director. That still means that we have to, that the city council, any agreement over $30,000 still must be approved by us.
Yes.
All this really means is that it may be approved to come to us. I'm not sure, because that language is a little bit inconsistent.
The municipal code does continue to control, and the code does say that you, the council, approve anything that's over $30,000. All this is doing is basically allowing staff to expedite the process. So for example, if there is one particular bidder that's a contractor that staff, for a smaller project, that staff finds, feels that the experience and so forth of that contractor is, does away with the need of having to go through the bidding process, the contract still has to come to you as the council, and if the council disagrees and wants to get additional bids, you can certainly direct the public works director to go back and get additional bids.
Okay. I just want to make sure that that's on the record. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And what's the difference... I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Yudi, you already asked. Do you have any other questions?
No.
Can I ask one final question? What is the difference between informal bidding and formal bidding?
Informal bidding is basically you can contact three or even more, if you like, but three or more contractors that you know specialize in a particular area. If you go through the formal bidding process, and I should defer to Director Throme, but I believe that what that means is that you have to publish in certain publications that go out to a vast number of contractors, and therefore, it invites a bigger response from a bigger group. That's the difference.
And so, okay, just so I understand, so in this new, anything up to $200,000 under our proposed changes, that's a public project, can be done by informal bidding, which means that who, well, primarily Director Throme, but whoever's in charge of the public project, then calls who they...
Essentially, contact.
And gets...
Contact, yes, essentially contact. Well, you would contact those people, you would, I'm assuming that Director Throme would get bids in writing, but it just doesn't have to be published for a certain period of time in the trade journals, et cetera. But it can, you definitely would want to reach out to anyone that you thought would be a recognized contractor with expertise in a particular area.
And they can just get one bid, or is there any more?
No, you have to get at least three.
Even in informal bidding?
Correct.
All right, so do we have any public comments, either by email first?
I have any email comments, but I do have a Zoom comment on this item from participant LB saying the state has given limited approval for design build by municipalities and sent a link to the state code.
Right, and that's another portion of this, is that we're adopting a design and build, right? That's another aspect that's new to our city?
Yes, that's correct, which can be quite a cost savings depending upon a particular project.
Do we have any Zoom comments or hands? Shall we?
No, hands.
All right, then I'll close the questions and ask council members, what is their conclusion on this item? Councilmember Wong?
No, I don't want any comments.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
I am fine and moving forward with it as requested to introduce only because we still have the final say. Thank you.
Councilmember Tal?
I have no further comments, thank you.
Councilmember Yudi?
No other questions or comments.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to waive full reading, read by title only, and adopt ordinance number O-20-1366, an ordinance of the city of San Marino, amending section 02.06.05 of the San Marino Municipal Code to clarify the city manager's purchasing authority, update bidding limits for public projects, and include the design-build method of project delivery.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call. Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
Yes.
Mayor Shepherd Romney?
No.
All right. And next, we are going to open a public hearing, and I will leave that to the vice mayor at this time, as I recuse myself. Thank you.
And I will be recusing myself also.
This is the continued public hearing for design review application number DRC 17-08 for the property located at 1400 Circle Drive. As you just seen, Mayor Shepherd Romney and Councilmember Jacobowski have recused themselves from this matter. The public hearing is now open. Director Cervantes, would you please give us your report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. The applicant for 1400 Circle Drive is requesting a continuance of this matter to the July 8th City Council meeting. As noted in the staff report, the applicant has expressed that there was insufficient time since the May meeting to fully address the direction of the council, which included exploring the possibility of keeping the front facade of the house. Staff continues to meet with the applicant to provide guidance with this project, and we did have a... The architect, as well as myself, had a sit-down meeting a couple days ago to go over some of the goals of the project or objectives of the project. And so at this point, it hasn't been fully vetted yet in terms of the direction by council. So staff is recommending to the city council, opening the continued public hearing. Hear any testimony from individuals who cannot attend the public hearing on July 8th and continue the public hearing to the July 8th, 2020 City Council meeting. I open for questions.
Thank you. Mr. Wong, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Councilman Tal? Have we kept the applicant informed of all of this as well?
Yes, the applicant is here in the audience, and I did have a conversation with them earlier in the week.
Okay, just so as long as they're kept in the loop. Thank you. We're getting to the public section. All prior testimony that has been given, this is part of the public record for this matter, so no one really needs to restate things they've already said in that initial public hearing last month. And since the applicant has requested a continuance, the council requests that if anybody wishes to testify regarding this matter, the testimony might be better held for July the 8th. However, if someone cannot attend the July 8th meeting or might not be able to attend or be glad to receive your comments now. Does anyone wish to speak at this time? Please. And staff, I'll limit the time to three minutes.
Good evening, council members. My name is Elizabeth Gleason, 1380 Circle Drive, and I just wanted, I guess, some clarification. I spoke with Aldo earlier this week, and there was some confusion over maintaining the wall that separates our property from 1400 Circle, and I just wanted to clarify that it was my understanding that this two-story wall that runs the length of our house is part of what's being talked about to be maintained. So in essence, you're maintaining an L, the front facade as well as this side wall. And that's really all I needed to say, but I don't want this to go too far along without that being clear.
And Cervantes, do you have a response to that, please?
No, I think that that's clear direction that was provided by council at the May meeting, and so I do thank you for your comment today. That will help affirm how we move forward. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any comments that have been submitted?
We do. We have two email comments. The first one is from Jim@GailEllis, and I will read it for you. "We would like to go on record that we support the construction project proposed at 1400 Circle Drive, if it is and stays within the appropriate city building codes, no variations. Changes cannot be made mid-project and it must stay within city code. This is not a historical building and is in fact an ICEOR. The neighborhood deserves a better home here, and hopefully, this owner will build it. As neighbors living across the street, we are well aware of the increased traffic and noise such a project will bring, but it will be of benefit in the long run. Thank you for your consideration." We have a second email comment from Ms. Shirley Jagels. "Dear Honorable Mayor Shepherd Romney and Council, from my view as a longtime resident, homeowner, taxpayer, community volunteer, and representative of San Marino Heritage, I wish to reiterate my opposition to any staff recommendation which would recommend permitting new construction at 1400 Circle Drive. San Marino Heritage's Facebook page follows this matter closely, and our 900 likes and followers ensure that when demolition alerts are posted, we reach thousands of community stakeholders on short notice. Furthermore, our 2018 iPetition, 1400 Circle Drive demolished or designated garnered over 277 signatures and 114 comments from the community on this issue. As always, it behooves the council to take the necessary steps to act in representing the best interests of the community. There is precedence when it comes to the following two suggestions which would protect valid community concerns. The suggestions are that the city council moves to require a full environmental impact report paid for by the applicants before such time as a vote on the application is conducted. This was the requirement on the application for new construction at 1406 Wilson Avenue. And that two, the city council requires a full review of the architectural merits, integrity, and historic associations of the current property by an independent historian engaged by the city. This was a requirement on the application for new construction at 1470 Virginia Road. Please accept my thanks in advance for your kind consideration of these reasonable suggestions and kindly include the attached digital Excel file within the 1400 Circle Drive record on this matter. Thank you."
Do we have anybody participating virtually who would like to comment?
No, no other comments.
Mr. Wong, do you have any position you got to...
No.
No, it doesn't surprise me that it's taken a little longer, and the continuance, if my opinion should be granted. And I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to July 8th, 2020. So moved? Is there a second? Second. Roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Tal?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Yudi?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Mayor, we're ready when you are. All right, we are now proceeding with continued business. Item number 13, receive and file the revised 2020 Independence Day celebration in light of COVID-19 under the Community Services Department. The Director Espinoza, can I, we have your presentation, please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. This is the fun stuff that we get to do in recreation, so I'm happy to be here. We have been moving very quickly with Fourth of July. It's right around the corner, and I'd like to share what we've done already. The first thing is the postcards. They've actually been mailed out. We'll start receiving them in the mail any day now, but not later than Saturday. They were mailed out yesterday. So all of these are done. The starter kits are here, and they're all packed and ready to go, and I'll show you a few of the items. The flags are here, and they're actually large, so they're very cool. And we also have some pennants that they can hang, and we have chalk, and we have crepe paper, and we've gotten many calls already just for the chalk, and so they're very interested in that, and we've got... Oh, and our signs!
And behind you, don't forget the sign!
And all our signs are all ready, and so we have the home decorating contest participant, and the winners will get these, and so they're all in already. And judging council, some members of the council have agreed to judge. And we also have, I thought this was interesting, we haven't even advertised for this at all yet, except a little bit on Facebook. We already have 10 people. Nine have signed up for the contest, and one is called "They Want More Chalk." And so, so these are all the things that we're doing, and it's going to be here in barely three weeks, so we're very excited, and the community seems to be excited. And just a reminder, this is a receive and file. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes, thank you. This is lovely. It seems to be a minimal additional expense if needed, but as you and I have spoken earlier, there's something about chalk right now that is cathartic, it's expressive, it's everything else. I would hope that if our demand exceeds our supply, that we would be able to consider some additional purchase. I can't imagine it being overly expensive. Is that accurate?
No, it's not overly expensive, and we kind of anticipated that, so we have 300 of these bags, all packed with chalk, and then we bought an additional... of these bags, all packed with chalk, and then we bought an additional supply of chalk that there's, that won't be in the bag, and the mayor knows that I did that because she asked me to do that.
And it would be a good item. Thank you.
Yeah, so we, we have purchased more. Hopefully, if we, if we run out, we will be able to get it fast, I, I hope.
And similarly, if, if we get this flood of interest and participation, this is really all we can offer our citizens for this board. So I hope we will consider additional purchases just to be able to hand people something. I think it's a joy that they want to be involved, and thank you for the work of the department.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wong?
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you for this effort.
Councilmember Talt?
I have no questions, other than is there a bottle of elvenir in those bags, too? Because it's Fourth of July.
It's just a small one.
Just a little one.
Yes, sorry.
300 may not be enough. But I thank you. It shows great imagination to find silver lining in a blurry cloud. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
No questions, but congratulations on your great attention.
Thank you.
And I just want to congratulate you and your staff for coming up with the ideas. I think it'll be a great program for our families and our community members as well, and it will be nice to see houses decorated and have that going on in our, when we don't have the normal gathering that we enjoy, and I know our community does, too. And I also wanted to encourage you that there's the activities of the pinwheel making and the rec department's going to have some activities, face painting, et cetera, that they're going to be online?
On Facebook, yeah, it'll be online on Facebook, yes.
So we'll be doing that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is just a receive and file.
Just a receive and file.
We will receive and file it and, and give you our great thanks for putting this together so quickly and being able to come up with these things, activities for our community.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I don't think we, I apologize, I did not ask for questions from the public, and I don't know, I just want to make sure if somebody's listening and wants the opportunity to ask about this. Were there any questions or comments, online, email, or via Zoom?
We do not have any comments on this item.
Thank you, and I apologize to the public of not thinking, but it occurred to me. Thank you. And next, we have an item of new business. I believe it's agenda item 14, approval to procure mobile data centers for police department patrol vehicles in an amount not to exceed $51,883 from Dell EMC Computers. And welcome, Chief Incontro. Can we have a presentation, please?
Thank you very much, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council, and staff. It's my opportunity to provide you information concerning our purchase of nine mobile digital computers, which will be installed in our new police cars, where we will purchase them this year. The, the expense was approved as part of this fiscal year's capital equipment process. The department evaluated three different computers from different manufacturers, GTAC, Panasonic, and Dell. All three had similar minimal, there was very minimal feature differences. There was very different, very little difference between them. Dell provided us the lowest price, and it still met our requirements. Additionally, with the new CAT RMS system that was recently approved, these Dell MDCs will, are the best recommended for both the new system and for the vehicle. If staff recommends the city council approve the procurement of nine Dell MDC units to be evaluated, I'm sorry, to be purchased, if city council concurs with staff's recommendation, appropriate motion would be, I may move to approve the purchase of nine Dell MDC units in an amount not to exceed $51,883 in fiscal year 2019-20 from account 591-30-4613-0580 Capital Equipment Fund. May I open for any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Talt, would you like to lead?
I have no questions. Thank you for your report, Jean.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
No, thorough report, thank you.
Councilmember Wong, any questions?
No, no question, thank you.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
No questions, thank you.
I'll go with no questions as well.
Thank you very much.
So can I have a, open it up and see if there are any public comments at this time, either on any platform, let's just say it like that.
We do not have any emails or Zoom participants wanting to speak.
Thank you very much. And I don't see any public comments here, so I'll close that and bring the item back to council for discussion. Do we have any, or should I?
I have no further questions.
Can I ask for a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion. I move to approve the purchase of nine Dell MDC units in the amount not to exceed $51,883 in fiscal year 2019-20 from account 591-30-4613-0580 Capital Equipment Fund.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second.
We have a roll call, please. Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Talt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Yudi?
Yes.
And Mayor Shepherd Romney?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion passes. Now is the time for written communications or public writings to be distributed. It's an opportunity to announce written communications to the city. I assume that what we have here, this email is already part of the record? Thank you. And I have not seen any others. Do we have anything online?
We do not have anything that is not related to an agenda item.
Thank you. And next, we have council reports. This is an opportunity to city council to inform the public of any meetings or conferences they have attended, or would anybody like to speak to this?
I just have a quick comment. The San Marino School Board last night approved the rehiring, I guess, is, or they withdrew the pick slips of the final four positions, so with the exception of the retirements and so forth, they will, they will not be laying any credentialed staff off. I don't know what they're going to do with the classified staff, but the credential staff will all remain intact.
Thank you for the update, Councilmember Talt. Does anybody else have any other things to share with the council at this time? Seeing none. Now we have public comments. I don't know if that's, does anybody wish to speak at this time? And Jean is not around today, or nor in the last couple of meetings, unfortunately. I hope he's well. Do we have any submitted by email or on?
We do not have any other comments over here.
All right, so seeing that we don't have any, oh, yes.
Mayor, may I just make a quick closed session report? After following a closed session, discussion occurred, no reportable action occurred. Thank you.
Thank you very much, city attorney. All right, so then I would like to adjourn the meeting to Friday, June 26th, at 8:30 a.m. at the San Marino Center, right here, and I'll, we'll see you then. Thank you.